We hear loads and we get online. Yeah, I know. I know. Did you see what Julie's doing? She's pointing out.
Quick meeting to order then, please stand for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the recognition of board members.
Thank you. We have a number of our board members who have been received honors from NISMBA, which is New York State School Boards Association. And I'll just read them in order and then I'll present the certificates. First, we have Julie Fago, who received both the Board Achievement Award and the Board Mastery Award. How about I do them all at once, so I'll get up at one time. So congratulations, Julie.
Thank you.
Then we have Michael Lee, who received the Board Achievement Award. And then we have Steve Sabo, who received the Board Mastery Award. The Board Mastery Award comes with a nice little binder. It does. It does. Sorry, Mike.
See, you did not, remember I told you?
Thank you.
One more level to go. You'll be on school board another five more years.
And if I could add just one thing, you know, I think it's important for always, always for the community to know that our Board of Education, it's a volunteer position and the extra time that they put in to receive these awards, I know the awards don't mean a whole lot to the members of this Board of Education, but the time that they put in for our community does, so thank you.
So we have to go back to New York City now, this year, to be recognized there during the annual convention.
Oh yeah, there you go.
Did you put a budget line?
All right, we'll have now also our annual budget hearing.
Okay, well, if you go to the first slide, again, everybody in the audience here has seen a lot of this before. We pulled some of the slides out, we wanted to focus on some of the really important items, just for people who, you know, had, these tend to be the questions that come up. First and foremost is the foundation aid. If you remember, the executive budget had a zero in foundation aid. In the end, the legislature, next year's foundation aid increase is 3.73%. That's a significant number, it's an important number. Understand that if you look back at the year before, we had a 0% increase in foundation aid. So the two-year average there is below 2%, but it's a really important number for us as a district and for our budget for next year. Here you can see the foundation aid, if you look down at the bottom, you can see that there's about a $2.2 million difference between what our aid is, what our foundation aid is versus what it should be if the foundation aid formula is being followed. Okay? The legislature has said that over the next two fiscal years, not this budget cycle, but the next two, that they're going to fully fund the foundation aid formula. If they do that, that would be putting $2.2 million back into our, our hands as a district. Okay? And that would be really important. So we're hoping that they are able to follow through on that. They've certainly set it as their goal and will, you know, do our best to hold them to it. Because it's something that they want to do and it's something that we think is important.
And just to review again, the district is going to be receiving federal stimulus monies beginning next year. CARES Act 2 at just over 3.2 million and American Rescue Plan Act money at just over 4.6 million. And we are currently working on a plan to spend that over the course of the grant period.
And if you just look at this slide, the next one, we've had this up here before, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. If you go to the next slide, okay, this slide here is that third stimulus package. And the idea is this, we will be bringing forward to the board a plan to spend, to expend these dollars over the next four years. Okay? And remember, a particular percentage needs to be spent on academic recovery, both during the school year and during the summer months. Okay? So we're gonna, we're putting together a plan, we've already started that. The things that we think will be most impactful for our students. Okay? And then we'll bring that to you.
And again, just to review the tax cap calculation, this is the formula provided by the state that I submit every year. Just going through, at the end, you can see our tax cap is at 1.99% or just over $677,000. And the levy increase, again, this year, the proposed amount is 1.99%. Over the last several years, it's been about 1.2% average over the last five years or so. And the budget increase, budget to budget is 2.73% for 21, 22, fiscal 21, 22. Okay, and then just to show the budget breakdown, the total budget is $79,222,507. And we want to look at it less, the capital reserve money, because actually, that money is coming from reserves. So it's really not affecting the budget so much. It's already, in other words, we already have the funds to pay for it, but because of the way we have to record our budget, it has to be included. So just looking at it, if you subtract out that reserve amount, the total is just over $79,000,017,057, or 2.46% increase from prior year.
And if you, if you look here in the, this is the entire budget, if you look down in the bottom corner, the revenue budget, if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, those are the dollars that are, that we're planning to put toward the budget to make the budget level. Okay? So those are our reserves, if you look from, just so I can see the number there, from 1040 on the right-hand side, all the way down, those are all unappropriated fund balance that we're going to appropriate and reserve monies that we're going to put forward to the budget to make the budget work for next year. Okay? It's a lower amount, it's a smaller amount than we did last year. That's good news. Okay, we need to do that, because the amount that we appropriated last year was an uncomfortable dollar amount. So we're able to lower that a little bit this upcoming year. If you go to the next slide, it's $3.3 million. And, and this slide here, fiscal stress rating at one point was the highest in the state. And now you know where we are, which is a much better place. Really, really important that we continue to have reserves in place for when bad things happen economically, right, in our nation, in our state, to be able to balance those things out so we don't have to pull program away from kids. All right?
And then just to review the propositions that you'll see on the budget vote, number one is the adoption of the budget. Number two will be authorizing the establishment of a school district transportation capital reserve fund. Number three will be the authorization to expend from a capital transportation reserve. And that $205,000 is for facilities, vehicles, and one food service van. Number four is the authorization to expend from a capital transportation reserve, again, and that $810,000 is for the purchase of new buses. And number five is authorizing establishment of a school district technology reserve fund.
Any questions?
The reserve appropriations from this past year.
I'm sorry?
The reserves we had from this year.
Yep.
Have all those been expensed?
So, no. No, do we have the number yet?
We don't know yet, until the budget's complete, until the expenditure year is done, we won't know where we end up.
So, so of those things that you know, right, the, if you went, and I'm not having it in front of me, Bob, I apologize. But if we, if we went back to last year's budget, anything that like, let's say we were pulling something from a capital reserve to pay, that's gone, right? Anything that we paid for buses, $800,000, that's gone. Those type of reserve amounts that go into the budget, they always are gone. It's the additional where we might be pulling from, like Ebroire, we might be pulling from the unappropriated fund balance. Those dollars, if we don't expend those, those get rolled back over and then a decision's made where those, where those funds go and what reserves they may go into. And remember, one of the other things that's, it's a good thing, and, and we needed it, is we were behind all those payments from the, for the Tuscarawas School, from New York State. Okay? Those dollars are now coming in, so we'll be able to fund a lot of these reserves that were starting up. We'll be able to put significant dollars into those funds so that we can purchase buses in the future, have other capital project work that we know needs to be done. As we get closer to the end of the year, what Allison does every year in the summers, she'll bring to you, say, here's where we would like to put this money and into these particular reserves.
The first chart, what's that, four and a half, from the federal?
Uh, from the next one, right here?
No, the one before that.
The four and a half, are you talking about the stimulus money?
Yes.
Okay, so go, go to the next one. This one here, this, this is the third federal stimulus funding amount, that's $4.6 million?
That's the total we're getting.
That's the third amount, so if you back up, one more, right here, right there. These are the, this is the second and third, okay, federal, amount of federal funds. That first one can be utilized for a lot of the past expenses that we had. Okay? So like even just in this budget year, we expended about 1.6, probably more, but when we looked at this number to begin with, it's about $1.6 million that we didn't have built into our budget. So those type of dollars can be utilized to go back to fill that gap. Okay? The, and there are requirements or guidelines for how those dollars can be used for the first one. The second one, though, that's the one that, there's, there's many things that can be used for, however, particular percentages need to be used, and we're waiting for the state to give a final document to us, okay? But particular percentages need to be utilized for academic recovery, both in the form of summer school and in the form of, you know, during the school year. So, you know, there's some clear ways that we do have to spend some of those dollars. Okay? And once we get that, that final document from the state, because what's supposed to happen is, what we got was like a few-page summary.
We haven't received guidance on either of them, really, fully.
Correct.
We haven't received money yet either, right?
No.
No, that's correct.
Is that something?
We aren't sure if it's going to be true, like other grants, like the first CARES Act money that we got was this year. They give you so much upfront.
Right.
For normal grants, like 20% upfront, and then as you expense it, you submit for reimbursement.
So, so as an example, right, if, of that 3.2, if we're able to do that and we can show that we, here's where we spent $1.6 million, they'll refund us, in essence, that 1.6. But we, all of those pieces have not been worked out yet.
So we really need to show.
Oh.
Every kind of.
Correct, they're going to keep trying, yeah, just like they do with other grants.
Yeah.
So this summer, we have summer school, we don't know what that's going to be.
No, but we, so, good question. So the summer school program that we just put in place, the elementary, we have a way to pay for that, which is through our title funds, okay? If for some reason, this funding isn't available, but the thing is, they've been very clear that the expectation is that we can go backwards and that that money needs to be used for exactly summer school.
We can go back to March 2020, so we can go back and it's.
And you don't have to put it through a.
Yep.
What else?
I'm just saying, it's not going to stall what we're doing.
No, 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 nope. Good question. Anything else? Good, thanks everyone.
All right, the call for motion then to accept the consensus agenda as submitted.
I'll make a motion.
Moving second, anything, any questions you have on any of the items or anything that you would like to separate the vote on by itself? And then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, who's abstaining, motion carries. Anything separated in the personnel?
Just number one.
The call for motion to accept personnel items, numbers one through 11.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, we'll separate number one. Any other thing to separate, discuss or vote on as a single item? All those in favor of accepting items two through 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who's abstaining, motion carries, she'll launch.
Thank you. It's, it's not often that we have to get into a wrestling match or rock, paper, scissors for who gets to present somebody at a Board of Education meeting, but that happened between Jeff Hazel and myself. He won. The, the person who we're going to be recommending tonight has worked closely with many of us for a number of years now, and I'll let Jeff Hazel take it from there and talk a little bit about Jennifer Goliath.
Thank you. It's, you know, normally when, when an administrator comes before you to say a few nice things about a candidate to be recommended for an appointment, they reference the resume, they reference some of the good work that they've done in their other district. But obviously, in this case, we know Jen. In fact, I've gotten to work with Jen for five and a half years. In that time, she's done a number of presentations for the Board of Education. And prior to that, she was a teacher leader with STLE. So instead, what I'd like to do is just reference three nice things about Jen, which you might not find on, on her resume, per se. First, if, if you think about the education circles that you might find yourself in, you, you start to hear people talking about lifelong learners, and that's a good thing, because we want to be surrounded by lifelong learners, we want to be a lifelong learner. We want our teachers to be lifelong learners. Jen takes that, if I may, a step further, she's truly a lifelong teacher. And that was so evident during the interview process. To paraphrase, loosely paraphrase, one of the other committee members, Jen presented herself professionally in a manner as though she was teaching us about the questions that we were asking. It was impressive and she hit it out of the park. Another thing you think about when you, when you think about leadership is you want your leaders to be making decisions that are in a manner aligned with your district mission, aligned with a core set of principles or values. If you work with Jen long enough, you start to see certain patterns, and if you pay attention and you listen and you look at the work, you, you see that one of her core set of guiding principles is in fact a concern for the equity of access for all children for learning, particularly for literacy. That's something that was very apparent in the initial conversations that we had about the summer program for elementary. What drove that at the very start, in addition to data, of course, was Jen's concern, how are we going to ensure all these kids have equity of access to learning so we can get them to start in the fall in a manner that they deserve? Of course, Jen realizes that to get to equity, you have to build consensus. You, you can't get to equity without that, and that's another thing I've actually gotten to observe in Jen over the years. Most recently, during the continuity of learning subcommittee meetings that she'd run with stakeholders, where she'd have to get this group of stakeholders to consensus, have to talk about some difficult things and get there, because she knew, if you can't get to consensus, you're not going to get to equity. If I may say, the way that, in which she gets to consensus with groups is because she's a lifelong teacher. So on behalf of that committee, I'm very, very pleased to, to, to recommend to you guys enthusiastically Jen Goliath for this position of Assistant Director for Curriculum Instruction and Technology Services. Thank you.
All those in favor then of appointing? I wasn't. Yeah. Move over. All those in favor of accepting Jen Goliath as Assistant Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology Services, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's abstaining, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say that it was, it has been a privilege and an absolute joy to work in the district for the last 15 years as a teacher, and I'm really excited to continue that journey in a new role. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for that opportunity.
Well learned. All right, capital project committee.
Um, just a capital project, so we didn't have anything really new, but we do have projects that are now begun. Some of the work outside is going to be starting shortly after the end of the school year. We'll pick the parking lot, the major job will be taking place. And we are still also working on some of our roofs that need some major repairs. Other than that, nothing new that.
I know I conveyed to the superintendent this week about the parking lot, and that's, uh, it definitely is in the time to be needed right now. You know, Jimmy Hoffa's body's in one of the pockets out there, so.
I think they found it over on the sidewalk, didn't they?
Yeah.
No, we did not find any.
Policy committee.
Policy committee, we met this evening prior to this meeting, discussed multiple policies. Quickly, if I'm wrong, we decided we're going to take about a week, right, to kind of go over what we discussed, report back to each other, and then we'll have some things on the agenda.
Okay.
Was that okay?
Well, because you have to, you have to the next board meeting, it's not like we're going to have a surprise board meeting next week.
I was like, I don't think we, I don't think we like change stuff. We had a long discussion after our policy, so.
Are you going to, you have to convene to another meeting, though? So you want to just do a meeting before the next board meeting for that?
No, we're just going to.
Okay. All right, you have some fundraising items as information.
Assistant committee meetings, I want to mention that Allison had an audit committee meeting today. And, you know, the auditor people were there, and we've got a very good audit, very good review. And the auditor was virtual, it seemed to be private state, but I commend everyone in the financial office. Everything seemed to go well. And maybe I heard Allison mention, maybe June or July we'll have another meeting. And that's it.
You're going to say you have another audit? All right, any questions for the committee chairs? Okay. We have some fundraising items, there's informational pieces there, you have the internal claims audit report as the information piece there. Ex-ople show student members report.
Yeah, so a couple things, um, first, for the senior class, the survey went out a couple weeks ago and only 127 people filled that out, but based on the responses, there's going to be a prom and it's going to be at class on June 11th, and all the info for that was sent out. So, all the seniors' emails, and there's your Google form for them to fill out. And they have to fill out the form in order to purchase it to get, so if you're a senior, that's your emails, you can fill that out if you want to go to prom. Um, so that's the update with that, but so that's something that, also this morning, um, the senior officers had a meeting with Mr. Paul Ball to talk about graduation, and he kind of told us the current plan, which we said a lot that he's going to talk about later, but we just wanted to say that we think it's a solid plan. And we're very, we're happy with the way things are looking. Um, it was definitely concerning, like throughout the year of all the COVID restrictions and guidelines, so we're excited and we think this is a good plan, so we just wanted to put that out there for the audience here. Um, so that is going to be two senior things. And I also just say that, um, the council is doing a t-shirt sale for like these two designs that were created by, um, high schoolers, um, they're going to go on the t-shirts, they got some other apparel on, on the website, um, but that's out for the entire district. Um, they're kind of just like a positive, like pumpkin family, um, we'll get this, through this together, I must say. So that's out for the entire district, I think, the way I have to do that. So we're hoping more people get involved with that. So, that's what I can say.
Is this an appropriate time because Marissa mentioned the PowerPoint to?
Sure.
The graduation PowerPoint?
That's perfectly fine, yeah.
Is that okay?
I just said, did you, you pick clocks or do you have your clocks?
Yeah, clocks, we got like the numbers, and it's a little bit more than we thought. We have 200 students there.
Okay.
And then I think it's a little more, but we have to include classrooms and stuff, so you can do it there.
Very good.
Okay, Marissa's going to chime in if I'm wrong. Right? Okay. We, we did send out a video, Mr. White and I put together a quick PowerPoint with a, with a little video this afternoon to all of our senior families about what graduation will look like. I just want to walk through it here so that the board is aware, because if you get any questions, you can answer them, you know, the best that you can, and then of course, direct them to myself or Mr. White if you need to. Graduation is scheduled for Saturday, June 26th. Still working on a time, it will be before noon, okay, for sure. We, we wanted to schedule it earlier rather than later for a number of reasons, heat, weather. If, if the weather's poor, we're going to have to be, be, be a little flexible, maybe. If it's really bad, if we have a storm coming in, we're going to have to maybe adjust to be able to push it back just a little bit. So we want to start earlier the better with the ability to be somewhat flexible if we need to. Next. It's going to be held on the turf, good news about that is, of course, that it drains really well. So, you know, even if we do get rain or something like that, it'll be a, a, a good place to, to sit, to rest your feet if you're the graduates. The real important part about this, and, and this has to do with the changes that came down from New York State Department of Health, is that we are able to have all of our class together. And from the onset, and I know Marissa will back me up on this, their goal was to get their class together. And one of the things that we were really wrestling with for a long time was, how do we get the class together but still have the parents be able to be there to honor them as well and to see them graduate? And so that was a big struggle until this most recent change with the Department of Health numbers, because of the size of our school, it certainly opened things up, so. The, you just seeing if I can read that that quickly, Mr. Quaid? Okay, next one. So here's the idea, the graduation plan is this, each graduate will be able to, will be given three tickets for guests. Okay? We will also be live streaming the graduation ceremony. So for people who want to see that, that they can, we've livestreamed in past years, we're going to do that again. More information will come out about tickets and ticket distribution and how all of that's going to work. The number of guests is based on, and again, this is current, 33% of the capacity of our seating. The capacity of the seating is 2,500. That 33% puts us right at a number that allows each person who's going to walk across that stage to have three people come. Okay? The, now, that's great as far as the number of people who are showing up, but now, there's another requirement, and that has to do with testing, vaccination, all those things, for any crowd over 500. testing, vaccination, all those things for any crowd over 500, okay? So that's this next slide. So for graduates, for any large-scale gathering, 500 or more, those in attendance have to do one or two, three things. They either have to show proof of vaccination, they have to have a negative COVID-19 test, or they have to have had a positive case themselves and shown a full recovery, but it has to be within 90 days of the graduation date, okay? Those three things. The district is considering utilizing the Binax testing, okay, for our graduates. For those who are not vaccinated or don't fall into that third category, okay? The issue, just so we understand, with the Binax testing is that it has to be done six hours before the event. So let's say we're at 11:00 AM, between 5:00 AM and 11:00 AM, we have to get those people tested. And that is like the fit, show 10, 15 minutes, the test results, right? Okay, so that's for our graduates. For our guests, same thing, they need to do one of those three things. However, we are not testing our guests. So they're gonna need to be able to show vaccination proof, the COVID test, or that they've had a positive case but fully recovered within 90 days. For them, there is, so the Binax test is that immediate test. If they were gonna go get tested, the PCR test, thank you. They, they can do that within 72 hours of the event. So within three days of the event, if they go get tested and show a negative result, they would be able to come to the ceremony, okay? It's outside. It's rain or shine. It has to be. We're talking about seniors having underneath all of their chairs like ponchos and, you know, so that they could put those on if it rains. If the weather is so bad right at the start, or, you know, at some point during, let's just say it started, we'll, we'll delay it. If we know, let's say this thing started at 10 o'clock and we, it's 9:45 and it is pouring out there and there's lightning, we'll back it up, okay? And what we'll ask is that we'll bring the kids inside, we'll give them cover, and we'll ask family members to wait in their cars, and then we'll use our Blackboard Connect system to send messages saying, okay, 20 minutes we're on, you know, once the weather clears a little bit. We won't necessarily wait till it completely stops, okay? But the idea, it's gonna be rain or shine. For people who are concerned about the inclement weather, the elements, you can certainly watch it on livestream if you choose, okay? There, the senior class, they do want to continue the one-year tradition. Tradition after one year, but this will make it.
The new tradition.
The new, this will make it a tradition, right? That was the inaugural parade last year, so this is the next one. That, this, they want to do the parade, we have not established a time for this yet, but that'll come out certainly to senior families. That parade goes through the school community. And then a few other things, graduation rehearsal, it's mandatory, an announcement will come on the date and time of that. It may be coupled with a senior luncheon, that's something else that's being talked about with the senior leaders. And then Marissa already shared information about prom, so that date's been established already.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there you go. Any questions? Obviously, still a lot of planning to do.
So is there any discussion about the three numbers of your parents who are graduating persons? Are you submitting names for them ahead of time? Are you also clearing them medically first, so you don't have to do that lining up waiting?
Great, great, great question. Yeah, our plan is to utilize a Google form that people could attach something to if they're not gonna bring it the day of. Obviously, if they're going to get their test the day of, or they get a result the day of, they'll bring that. But as many people as we can have cleared ahead of time, we'll clear. Correct, absolutely. That's why we're gonna, that's exactly why we're gonna send it out. Absolutely. Yep. That's right.
Is there any discussion on two, three days prior to 21st to 26th? We know it's gonna be downpour, thunderstorms. Is there any discussion on delaying the day or is that's gonna happen?
I don't think there was, but, you know, I guess I would say this, you know, ready? Everyone, no, no, good, good question. Everybody hit record. Oh, that's right, this is already recording. I think it's very rare that we get a full day like that in late June. I know, I know, I know, I know.
He never learns.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, this was, this was part of the thinking, right? So that's why we said we wouldn't move it, all right? You know what I'm more worried about in late June? Because this is what we usually deal with, is that it's gonna be really hot. And that it's gonna be so hot that on that turf, it's gonna feel really, really warm. And that's why we want it to happen in the morning, because we've had those days where, well, you know, there's a board, where people say, cheeper, screeper, should we have a hot weather day? Because, you know, the rooms aren't air-conditioned and the turf gets warmer than, than, you know, our classrooms. So when it's, when the sun's beating down on it, especially mid-afternoon.
Will, what, for the vaccination, are you accepting as like the ID? Is it just the card or are you accepting the Excel sure pass?
It could be the Excel sure pass, it could be either. We'll send something out with all the details.
And you're talking fully vaccinated, not just one?
Correct, yeah, it has to be, and, and good, good question. So the guidelines are very clear, we did send those out to all of our senior parents as well as an attachment on the email that went out on Friday. And it is, it's a New York State Health document on end-of-the-year activities, okay? We'll, we'll put that out with other communications as well, but it spells that out pretty clearly. Now, there's a lot of possibilities between now and June 1st, right? Certainly between now and graduation regarding, will the numbers change with regard to, how many can you have without having them tested, right? Because that number just changed. You know, those things all could be adjusted by then. If they do, we'll get that information out, right? That's possible. Also possible is the total number, the percentage that's allowed for an event like this. Right now, it's 33% of your capacity. I wouldn't be surprised if that number changed.
Especially since, I mean, the governor came out today saying that Broadway can be at 100% capacity starting in September.
I, I, absolutely. No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if we see other adjustments. So it was really important as we worked with the student leaders, right? That we didn't make this decision hastily, maybe a month, month and a half ago, when some people were saying, what are we gonna do? Can't we? If we made that decision then, it would have been the drive-through that we did last year, that, that would have been it.
What is it, what's the total number of people, if, let's say they went to 100% capacity for outdoor events? What is the maximum number that each student will be able to bring for our?
I think we probably align it with what we've done in the past, I would think, for, for like a graduation in our part. But we have to do the math on it.
Because, I mean, you don't have, there's the bleachers for, that's in the, on the side, you could also do softball and baseball bleachers technically too, couldn't you?
You could, but the way it'll be set up, you wouldn't see a thing and we wouldn't have a way to really, you know, let people see it that way either then.
We can sit Mike there.
Any, any other, any other questions? Good, okay, thanks.
All right, Presence Report. Just, you know, thinking ahead, I made a joke about this at the beginning there. NISW's annual convention is in October. So I know that they are, again, I think I've mentioned this last meeting, they're surveying us and seeing who is actually gonna be interested in that piece. And I'm just putting that buzz in your head that they would like to know it by next month. So if you could, you know, think about.
Do you want everybody to let Maureen know and then?
Yeah, if you could, if you could let Maureen know, you know, if you would be willing to attend.
By the first meeting in June?
Yeah. I, I don't, I didn't see, Maureen, did you see it? They started booking yet? I did not see that come through yet, so. They just keep pushing the, pushing the convention.
They'll let us start, like sometime in July. This is when they'll have the registration opener.
Well, it's not just that, I think what they're doing is doing a value, they're, they're evaluating if they're going to actually have a virtual option. Because I guess it's a lot, I mean, it's a big, it's a big thing to produce at the same time as having that people live. So I think that's, that's what they're weighing. And if they don't have enough attending to cover costs, I think they'll just do virtual. But I think that's what their, their, their goal is to say, are we gonna have enough covering costs to have in person? Because personally, even if it wasn't a pandemic and it was anything like the last time was in New York City, it wasn't worth it. That was horrible. You know, room, you, you have that many school board people come and you have each session limited to 25 people. So the previous session doesn't leave, they stay there and no one gets in to see anything. So it's a new, it's a different hotel, it's one avenue over now. So it's, instead of being on Broadway, it's over on Avenue Americas. So if you don't know New York City, that's, you know, a little higher in price, going over one more. But it's same, ironically, the same street. It's still on 47th.
I was just gonna say, I don't know that any prices have come out yet though for them. I didn't think so.
So, all right, that being said, we'll move over to Superintention Report.
Great, just a few things. One, a few CDEP event reminders. One, the Elementary Virtual District Glow Dance Party is May 21st. The EcoCampus Revitalization Project is May 22nd. And the 5K Run Walk is open for people to register for until May 16th. And as a plug for the senior class, for people who go on, sign up. The, I think it's like $4 of that, those proceeds go to the senior class for each one purchased. So please, please take advantage and help out our senior class. On June 2nd, we're planning to honor our retirees, both last year's retirees and this year's retirees. On June 16th, we will honor our those with, for tenure from last year. We'll do the tenure recognitions for, that are for this year, end of this year in September, okay? And the, this is mentioned to the board, there, for the National Junior Honor Society, they're doing a virtual ceremony for families, but they're doing it in person for the, for the students. And that's going to be May 19th, May 20th, it's at 12:00 PM. Let it get the rain out now. May, May 19th, May 20th, 12:00 PM. And then, last but not least, food service. Remind people at every meeting that there are free breakfast, free lunches available for all of our students. That has actually been extended, it was extended initially until September 30th of 2021. It's now been extended through all of next school year, so until June of 2020, June 30th of 2022. That's all.
That was another piece that was brought up and discussed, that it would be, there's a lot of lobbying making that permanent. That it's just free breakfast and lunch for anyone at schools, you know, permanently. So I know that is being discussed at the federal level and it wouldn't be a bad thing. So, all right, any items for board discussion? For the, for graduation, our, that's, that's a piece to discuss right now, some board attendance. You know, do we need to limit board members or not have us there to keep, for enough people to be able to attend?
How about you let me let you know if these numbers change or how many people actually? Because we always have some people from the graduating class who don't attend or don't, don't use all the tickets. Maybe as we get a little bit closer, we do it that way. Here, the, the other piece of it is this, if you were, if anyone was taking part in the ceremony and you were, and you were out on the field, that wouldn't count against our number, so we can, we can look at it that way too.
Good question. I just was thinking it might be a good idea if we all purchased those shirts that they're selling. Maybe I'll order them to a meeting. I don't know when they come in, do you know, Marissa, like if you order them?
I know I don't have my size, thanks.
Okay.
They, so what they did, so as far as, just really quick on the shirts, they did, the, the first group that ordered, they've already delivered those shirts. Now they're gonna take them in up until though, May 16th, so then they'll do, they'll do the order right at that point. So they'll do a final order. So I would imagine by like, you know, the June meeting, one of the June meetings, they'd be here, certainly by the second one, I'm sure.
What do you guys think?
Sure.
Yeah, I just pulled it up online, I think they're like $18 for long sleeve, $15 for short sleeve.
Yep, that's right. Mr. Stack will be willing, I'm sure, to send that announcement out to BOE 405.
Sorry, I just want to be clear, so the, the wellness wear shirts have come in and we're ordering more, but I think the shirts that you're referencing.
Yeah, I was talking about the student designs. Yeah, sorry, my bad.
And of course, I'd be, you know, inclusive of that.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, I can text you guys the link, it's really easy and I can, I'm even happy, I can order them if they're most of your sizes, we can consider.
I have to give you my size then.
Well, I mean, it's okay, okay. But I don't, I thought it would be a nice idea.
He doesn't know how to use the internet, so that's why.
It's a great idea.
I got you, Bob, don't worry. I'll take your cash too, you don't even have to send.
Any other items for board discussion?
Okay, one other thing, don't get mad at me. I really think we need to revisit this middle school new pickup and drop-off thing. I don't know if any of you have witnessed it or been through it, you probably haven't, I don't, you probably haven't either. But I just think it is an absolute nightmare. And I've had complaints from other parents, they've literally stopped me in the line and they're like, what is this? So my concern is, it works okay for now, but what is going to happen when you have a full building of kids? Like if you don't get there by like 10 after 2, you're out past the stop sign, which then causes congestion for everybody kind of coming in and coming out. And the other day, I saw somebody that was probably going to a sport practice or something, that cut, was trying to cut through the middle. Do you have the line of cars? You have the cars coming out. This person, it was a kid, a student, trying to go through the middle because it was just completely blocked and not, they were probably gonna be late or whatever the circumstance was, it was a disaster. Just my thoughts, yeah.
So, question, and then kind of.
Okay.
Were you just talking about just the pickup?
I am not there for drop-off, Amanda drives in the morning, so, but I know they leave 10 minutes earlier now because of the drop-off line, so. And I, like I said, I've been getting there normally, before I could get there at like 20 after, and now I have to get there like 10 after just to get a decent spot where I don't feel like I'm sticking out or I'm gonna be like causing a problem.
So I, for, for the, I hadn't heard anything about the drop-off in the morning, I've seen it. The pickup, we did take a look at, and again, and one of the things that we're going to, and we have our, we had our architect looking at once, okay, we'll do that again. With the idea that in that small parking lot that's near the building, right now, there's only one lane of traffic. And if you've been to like Eric Road where there's multiple lanes, the idea is to go in there and kind of create multiple lanes of one-way traffic. And that would, I think, cause less of a backup than, than you would have. What I do love about it still is that you don't have kids cutting in between buses and in between cars. And, you know, unfortunately, we'll have cars that'll pull behind our buses in that bus lane. So that's kind of what drove, drove this, but, but we are, we are looking at that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to changing it, I just think the way it is right now.
You're, you're, yeah, and you're, and I think your, your point that you're more concerned particularly about what it's, because I was there with what it looked like now, and it was like three-minute, four-minute backup, like, right?
I'm picking you up tomorrow, we're gonna go.
Come on.
We're gonna sit.
Come on.
In that line and you're gonna look at all the Eric Road moms that I know and they're.
Mike, can we look at, can you get her driving record first before I know if I can?
It's clear, hold on.
Okay.
So be ready.
I'll make, I'll make sure, I think I can be, I'll make sure I'm there, you'll see me standing there on the sidewalk.
Great, you know it's gonna be flawless tomorrow.
No, no, I never think anything's flawless, so, but, but your, your point was taken.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It are, because it's been so long since we've, I saw the plans for Capital Project for the parking lot. Is there any redesign with where the islands are in there? I mean, are we taking any of those out so that we could create better flow even in that area? Because I'm thinking, you know, right now, where they go in there, they come, they loop back around to the left and come out right. Cause I'm thinking, you know, right now where they go in there, they come, they loop back around to the left and come out, right?
Yeah.
What about, I mean, going, dropping off and maybe using the back of the middle school as a drop off and coming through under the bridge back out? I mean, if you had a, a center exit, if you had a center exit where that you come out from the bridge and you go straight out there. Where that's exit only and enter only would be in front of the middle school there.
So where, so where would you be suggesting that they drop off?
Behind the middle school, come in the back door of the middle school.
So now you, now you have multiple main points of entry, which is really what you.
I thought you were saying drop off and then leave.
No, we have the one.
Instead of looping.
You're talking about, are you talking about, I just want to make sure. We're talking about, you're talking about drop off or pickup?
Like if they're dropping off and they're gonna leave, what, what my leaving, I'm saying is this, so they drop the kids off and they go around behind the middle school. And come out from under the cap, the, the bridge. Instead of looping back around and providing.
I get, I get what you're saying, but all the buses pull through the bus lane.
So you're cutting the buses off and.
Right. But, but, um, on pickup, it might be different if they left. A different door in the building, you know, as far as, you know, and I think all of you know this, we talked about some of this at least. Like with school safety, the real goal is to create, um, one point of entry. You know, when, when kids are leaving at the end of the day, it's different. And again, I think Julie's talking more about pickup than drop off. So.
Well, and I think too, we asked our parents to drive this year and we may be in the same boat next year where we're saying that we still need, if you can, please do so.
Yeah, but, but the difference, the change has already taken place with that because it really says now like in busing, um, when possible. So there is the flexibility now to have more, um, people on a bus. So that, so that will, that will change. So that may alleviate some of this, right?
So stand up and show what you're talking about. Cause I think I know what you're talking about.
Well, yeah. What I'm just saying is instead of pulling here, you loop back here and leave, come here and literally leave out that way.
Yeah.
I mean, what I never understood is this, that's this, it's almost like this, this should be the center. There should be an exit at the road level. In that middle spot there as opposed to be.
And, and the problem is, and you can show it since you're up there if you would, but the buses, where the, where the buses come from the bus.
So you're right though, at, at pickup, at the end of the day, the buses should already be there. Or be gone by that time, you know, being to go, to go at that time. So.
But you see what I'm saying about how you block that whole road with people coming in and coming out.
Yeah. So, so what we're talking about is having, so they, they, they come in the street, they come here, okay, for pickup. And then they pull into this parking lot, right? That's what we're doing right now. Right now there's one lane here for pickup. We're talking about, we know we can make two. We're talking about is could that even be extended further? Could there be three lanes within here?
Right.
Okay. Then, you know, they're gonna have to let each other out to, to, to get out of here. Um, so that's what we're, that's, that's what we're looking at now. But you know, is there, is there another place to, another door to use?
You're basically by having multiple lanes causing the same issue you had up there. We had two lanes of kids getting out in front of each other's cars.
Yeah, but here, here's the difference. You know, like that whole area, you'd have lined, you'd have cone. Kind of, that's what we have at Eric Road, right? And you'd have people there to, to orchestrate a little bit.
So they're coming out the same way they're going in.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. Like if you have kids that are trying to get to sports or like getting to those back fields or like, that's like, I literally saw this girl try to go through. But like, because whatever reason.
But if you go, you go around, that's possibly could be blocked in front. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah. So like you come out here and then you have people coming out this way. I don't.
No, I'm saying going around to the other side. Does that get blocked in the front?
Oh, in the back, you mean?
Yeah. Does that get blocked in the front? For the buses coming?
Yeah. Well, I don't think they block that.
No. So, so the problem, the, the, I mean, the problem would be this, right? The, 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 the students are all let out at the same time.
Yeah.
At the middle school level. So they get on the buses, takes a little bit for the buses to fill. By the time kid, people are getting into their cars as they would, as they would wrap back around this way and come out here and shoot out this way. These buses would, at some point it wouldn't be the first car, well, they'd start moving. And so now you, you have the, the, the buses moving and the cars trying to get through.
Plus you have high school kid, you have the high school kids getting, coming out to get on the buses too, right? So they're crossing that middle road.
That's right.
And vice versa, the buses go down far enough.
You could. What you'd be fighting, what, what you'd be fighting then if you bring them all the way around, okay? And you bring them around and they come around this way here. Now they have to get out at that stop sign. Which is where all the high school parents will come in to pick up and go in the circle and go right back out or going. So they'd all be waiting at that stop sign. What's that?
The athletes walking along and back through.
Yeah.
You, you'd get people.
Yeah. You know, I don't know that we want to pull, as a matter of fact, we're trying to really discourage people from parking in the back, coming through the back. Like, like you said, that student was, really they should be staying up front.
Right.
And, and so that person cutting in between two lines of traffic should never happen for a lot of reasons. But, um, one is they shouldn't be heading back there anyway. They should be walking to their school.
So let me ask you, was one of the other tie-ups, the fact that at the light, there's one, only one exit lane at the light. And they're waiting, some people are waiting to turn left that gets bogged down in the right lane and backed up there.
Yeah. I think there's, I think there's only though, wha- what I saw, there was only a short period once the buses get going. To where they're competing for that. Once the buses, and that was only a few minutes, once the buses are clear, then the, the, the parent traffic was pretty quick getting out of there.
Cause I was gonna say, why, if you don't, if you made that one exit only, I mean, it would be take, it take a replanning a little bit with lights and everything. And make that entrance only over here next to the, the high school where the high school loop road is, but the other road. You know, they would enter there and then be able to calm down and take a right.
It lengthens a little bit where they'd be backed up too.
Yes. So you would have entrance only, you could make a right, you could make a left if you're in the left lane. Come down, cross, come and around here, loop back. It would be two lanes either direction there, but then. You could get in the left lane to make a left on there and the right lane to make a right on there because then you would have, you know.
It would, it would, right. And the one thing it would do is it would lengthen the, then, yep. Um.
Yeah. Because right now you only have that short little.
Well, and I'll tell you, the, the other problem with that, that entrance is, is the left turn into it, that left turn lane is two car lengths.
Yeah. And there's no arrow.
Yeah, there's no arrow and it is, it, it's hard. I mean, it gets bogged up over there.
What I don't, so we'll, we'll look at that. I, what you just suggested, what, what I don't know is how many people currently like, because that's the, 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 one of the high school lots and students. How many kids leave there now? They would all potentially just, again, laying this out, right? They, they would potentially, all of those, the seniors would be pulling out now that you just let me roll a little talk back here. Okay? They, they would, they would be pulling out here and kind of competing to get into this line to get out while these people are coming back this way, right?
Yeah.
That, you know what I'm saying? So if, if that, if you can't go out that way where a lot of our seniors do, they're gonna do one or two things. They're gonna try to come up here, scoot out there and try to get into this traffic pattern. Or they're gonna scoot over here and try to get into this traffic pattern when these people are all waiting.
Is there a way you could just mix the pickups a few minutes earlier?
Well, that's where it comes down.
Well, that is like, that's what they do at the elementary, right? You know, um, you know, you couldn't. Right. You couldn't, you know, um.
That's, that's where I come down and asked about the islands and things like that. Cause really I'm, let's, let's talk about this logic now without the whole. That island there makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever between that little parking lot, that area there and the main one. It's, I, I, it's amazing that we see how many people turn in there thinking they can get over to the high school and all of a sudden realize they can't, have to turn around. You know, so I didn't know if that was something that could just be demolished with our.
It was put in to separate student parking from adult parking. That's what that separation is.
Well, I'm not trying to like, I just feel like.
You're asking a question that you don't, you don't want it, you want something that we, we're hoping only makes it better to not be worse.
Yeah.
Of course. That's.
And again, I just feel like once you have a full building.
Yep. I hear you. So I'll, I'll, I'll ask, um, you know, I know that we have them kind of look at this design, right? Me, me and the architects, this is kind of what they, this is what, much more their area. But I'll, I'll ask about a couple of those things and say, is there something else that's more feasible? It's, it's hard for us to predict too, how many people will stop driving, like what percentage will continue driving now? You know, I think that's, that's tough.
But I mean, you identified other issues. You've identified that there's obviously a, a safety factor right there with the weight dropping off. So you're going to want to continue that with even the, you know, how, how minimal that driving amount goes. But the other problem is, is that, you know, there's other, other factors in there too. The, that, seriously, that left turn lane into era, to Edwardtown Middle School. Is horrible with how small of a turning lane you have to get in there. And I, I don't know how many times in the morning I've seen, you know, and, and then with someone trying to pull, turn down, uh, down two road there. You're sharing that, almost sharing that little turning area with someone going down there and you say make it wider. Well, no, I mean, they know, either you have to have the, the road made, made wider to add a, a turning lane down a little bit. It still doesn't take care of the, the two road problem, but at least down here you have a larger approach to.
And this isn't happening now. This isn't happening now with this project, but you know, a long-term possibility. Again, you can't have entrance ways. They can only, you can't put a new interest ways, entryways that are certain amount of feet apart. I don't know what those specs are, but ideally like, you know, probably running something from here that goes out over there. Right? Is, is ideal because now you bring them in, they get through here, they're not really bogged down. They come back around. And I know I can't see this part right now, but they come back here and they go here and they go out. And we do own the property that's, that's over there. You know, that, we, we, we talked about that the other day when we were out there. Um, we know that that's not a tomorrow fix. But you know, I think long-term it could actually free up a lot of this and spread out the traffic flow a little bit. It would ju, it just has to be far enough away so that you don't have one person turning out, you know, as another one just, you know, and they're running into each other. And, and you'd probably have to have that be a one, potentially a one way.
You see that with that exit, if someone's making a right hand turn out of there into a left hand turn, turning out of there.
That's exactly right. Yep.
Well, we'll send it to the capital project committee. They can review it.
See Bob? There you go. Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Any other items for board discussion?
No, I'm done.
Sure? Um, any old business at this time? Any new business? Great. Um, board member comments?
Yeah. I'd like to congratulate Jen. I mean, since I've been here, I've seen nothing but great things that you've done for the school district. And this is well earned. I congratulate you for it. Thank you.
I, I think that's a sentiment from then all the board here. I mean, we've seen you grow. Obviously Rick, well, Rick's older than me, but I've been on board longer than him. You know, we've seen you since you started in that role, um, you know, and moved through it. So it's, it's, it's great to see you. You now join the administrative ranks and, you know, you have that full title of, of, uh, you know, the director of Brickland, uh, assistant director of Brickland. So, um, we, we all know you more than Jeff anyway. So it's, yeah. But no, I, again, we, we seen you grow. It's, and I'm glad and we're very relieved to keep you here. And that was one of the things that we were really hopeful for. We're glad that you decided to stay with us. So thank you. Congratulations on that. All right. Uh, any other board member comments? Uh, just a reminder, you have your school law books. There's a test next board meeting. Make sure you've read them and actually taken the seal off the packaging this time. I'm hoping that I keep asking him to buy us the entire unabridged version. You know, but there's not enough room, I guess, in the school for it.
Tom, I appreciate if you, uh, were to inform the president, we have harassment policies.
I just updated that on our website. First now.
That's right. That's right.
I didn't think the board was involved in that. No, it's not. And you know, I guess you are, the hazing of our freshman board members, you know, can, can continue because I don't see it on. Uh, and then the other part, just a reminder, as I, I mentioned earlier, the, uh, board, a board retreat superintendent, I will come up with something and some ideas. Or we'll send out to you as a, um, we'll do a, basically do a Google poll for them and see a couple of topics they want to put into it. And we'll, we'll plan a day in the summer to have a, have a little retreat here. Sure. So pools open, right? Superintendent will, will cook chili for us again.
Yeah, in the summer.
Not in the summer.
So all right. Any, anything else to go to the order before I, uh, wrap everything up? All right. All those in favor of, like motion to adjourn? Moving second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Hold your standing. Motion carries. Adjourn.